I'll call this meeting to order. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing done. We will deem the agenda as approved. Before we get into council announcements, I'll just let the public know that September is Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Awareness Month with September 9th being the day assigned to that. And that proclamation will be posted on our social media feeds as well as other channels that we normally use. Counselor announcements? Any for anything coming up? Tomorrow? Yep? This weekend, the, well, actually Cheryl should do this one, sorry. This weekend? Yeah, sorry.
This weekend is Swim Provincial's and our Bridgewater Barracudas will be in, at the Bedford Place. Bedford Beavers is hosting, so it takes place over Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So we're wishing our Bridgewater Barracudas all the best of luck in the Swim Provincial's.
Awesome, yes. Good luck to the Cudas. This Tuesday, tomorrow, is the Glow Walk behind the Dez Brerze. So the weather is looking kind of fifty-fifty, but I'm going to attend unless it's pouring rain. It'll mess up my hair, but I will, boy, you're quick to laugh. I noticed the deputy mayor didn't laugh. Anyway, I would encourage people to attend. It sounds like it's a lot of fun. And of course, behind that park and around Woodland Gardens, this is a beautiful area of our town, so I would encourage those who are looking for something fun to do, a little bit different, to join me. Anyone else have activities coming up? No? All right. Well, then we'll move right along. We're a little early, but we have our delegation here, so maybe we'll ask Ashton.
We're just making notes.
You can make them on the fly. We'll ask Ashton Roderizer to come and speak about Art Happening. We're quick and efficient, sorry.
I see that, I hear that. That's great. I also have Charity Fraser with me as well here tonight, board member of Art Happening. So thank you, Mayor and councillors, for seeing us this evening. We wanted just to take our ten minutes and chat about what we've been up to in the last year and just remind you of like some of our value and what we're doing and how we're doing it. So just to kind of kick off the night, I just wanted to read you our mission statement, which we very carefully updated last year. So Art Happening Bridgewater is a non-for-profit that offers high-quality accessible arts and culture programming, events and opportunities where people of all ages and backgrounds can exchange ideas, skills, and talents. We provide an inclusive environment so that those who participate can learn and grow and share their talents with their community, contributing to a vibrant downtown Bridgewater. And then our vision is to be a community leader utilizing arts and culture to enhance and stimulate a creative, cooperative, and economically vibrant community. And this will attract residents, tourists, and businesses to downtown Bridgewater and more enrich the local community in Nova Scotia and beyond. So you can kind of see our mission is really what we're doing on the day-to-day ground and our vision is really trying to contribute to that overall vision of what you guys have as well and speak to that a little bit. I just wanted to let you know that we will be closing off with a short one-minute video as well, as long as the tech works for us well, so. Next. Tech support, we need you! This doesn't count our ten minutes. So I'll keep going, I'll keep going. Oh, I was gonna say like, I'm really sorry that we're very flustered. We had a very busy weekend, so I was gonna apologize in advance for our silliness, I guess, tonight. So our values are really all about like all teachers, all learners. We really believe that people have something to teach and something to learn, no matter what your background is, how old you are. And this sort of spirit of inclusivity, so everyone can create no matter what age, race, ability, economic status, abilities, and so on. Again, sustainability and revitalization, so really trying to contribute back to what the town's doing, how we can do that on the ground. Connecting to the natural world, so trying to be as eco-friendly as possible. And building resiliency, and that's for individuals as well as the community, so people can build their skills and talents so that they can be strong, self-sufficient people in the world and in our community. So there you go. So we've been growing since 2014 and we're the only organization east of Montreal with this very specific art hive model. Like I said, it was based out of Montreal where, around the idea of accessible, free low-cost programming with sort of the foundation being our open studio. I'm sure you'll talk about that in a minute. And we're led, and the organization is led by community developers and creatives from in and around Bridgewater. So we're passing the cherry. Okay. Like I'll do the cookie thing. Okay, it's working, yay!
Hey, so in the past year, some of the highlights, you can see up here, the milestones are our art and Action Hub, which was a joint.
Project?
Project, sorry. A joint project with, oh my.
Youth Art Connection.
Youth Art Connection. Okay, thank you. With Youth Art Connection in the city, it brought youth together to create and they made the mural that we have sitting in our space right now that we're hoping to have installed somewheres along King Street this summer. They completely came up with the concept for the mural. They created the mural and it looks fantastic. It was super exciting to see it come together. We've also got, we're successful in some of our grant applications, including through Community Culture and Heritage and Heritage Canada Grants. We have been on the Downtown Planning Advisory Committee as well as the Public Art Subcommittee here for the Town of Bridgewater. And we've hosted our third annual Color Festival as a fundraiser and it was awesome. I was so glad I got to go. We were able to hire a summer student this year and we're right now just prepping for the seventh annual Afterglow Art Festival. And this past weekend, while we're a little bit frazzled right now, we created and hosted the Small Town's Big Art Symposium, which was really great. So some of our core programs and events include Art Jam, Open Mic Night, Write Night, various performances, workshops, poetry sessions, board game nights, and all kinds of other great stuff. In the past year, we hosted 327 low-cost or no-cost programs or open times, and that's up almost forty percent from the previous year. And our in-person visits also increased twenty percent from the previous year. We were almost at 2,000 visits last year, and that's not including Afterglow. So that's just people, you know, coming into our space and attending our programs. And there was an estimated 1,500 volunteer hours, which is valued at approximately $18,000. Yeah, so some other successes from this past year is, yeah, forming intergenerational relationships in the space. We've been able to sustain and grow our ongoing monthly programs, especially our open studio has become a lot more popular and more people have been attending that. We've been able to engage and build partnerships with organizations and businesses. Thankfully, we've been able to have a staff person onsite, so that's led to us having consistent open hours so that the public can drop in and see what we're all about. And we've seen our core team grow, which is really exciting. I know a lot of organizations have a lot of trouble keeping board members and team members, so the fact that ours is growing is really exciting. And like I had mentioned before, how we had successful grant applications, successful funding and donations.
So I just wanted to quickly speak around some of the social and public as well as economic benefits of Art Happening. So we wanted to really highlight the Town of Bridgewater's Economic Action Plan, and there's three sort of aspects to that. One of them is being our people enjoy high levels of community well-being. There's some stats there, but overall creativity, you know, Canadians believe that engagement with arts leads to good health and well-being, which is, you know, a very strong link to that. And, you know, people believe that community as a whole benefits when there's more people that are involved and are participating in the arts, which is really great that we can offer and our sort of vision and mission around being low-cost, no-cost programming can really contribute to that too a lot. As well as the economic benefits, so just wanted to highlight within the action plan as well is King Street is a vibrant and thriving place. So we're very excited that we were invited to be a part of the Planning Advisory Committee and the Public Art Committee, and we were told that is because of our expertise and knowledge around community development, not just art and creativity, but our community development engagement, people that are involved with the space that really can help move that forward, so very excited about that. And believe that events like that we are hosting as well can contribute to the, you know, the local Bridgewater economy. And Canadians do spend more on performing arts than these live sports, which is kind of a surprise. And a lot of businesses and skilled workers agree that thriving arts community can be a driving factor when considering relocation to a place, which is really something that we are happy to contribute to as well.
Yeah, so this past weekend, we hosted first-ever Small Town's Big Art Symposium for Sparking Rural Creativity. And kind of the idea behind this is that, you know, in the work that we are doing, we keep hearing about stuff, you know, like, oh, there's something really great happening in Parsborough, but nobody really knows what it is, or there's something really cool happening in Sydney, but again, nobody really knows what it is. So the idea around this was to bring those different organizations together to find out what it is that they're doing in these other places. And I think it was a really successful weekend. We had like more than 20 arts organizations, artists, and community developers from across Nova Scotia as well as some local people as well. And it was just really exciting to find out what other people are working on, you know, finding out what challenges they're having, finding the commonalities with what we're doing. And then also coming up with like a long-term plan, I guess, for how we can all support each other in the work that we're doing, because everyone, I think, there was a lot of commonalities, but there was also a lot of differences. So it was really great to find out how, you know, the things we're doing here can be supporting what somebody's doing in another place. And, you know, I think it really positions Bridgewater as an incubator for innovative community development within arts and culture sector. And we're really hoping that this will be just the start and that we'll be able to, you know, hope, not, maybe not us host it in next year or the year after, but, you know, have it move around to the different communities that we were able to speak with this past weekend, so. It's very exciting.
Yeah, we had some really great feedback from the people that attended that event and, you know, really appreciated that David, you were able to come and kind of open us up that day on Friday. And it was great to have Cheryl there as a representative off on Friday to kind of hear some of those stories. And, you know, we had a lot of people say that this was, you know, that they go to a lot of conferences, events, and this was like the best that they've been to in terms of really getting some actionable items talked through. So it was very, very exciting stuff. And I was really appreciative that a lot of people came with a spirit of cooperation. So, yeah, we're, obviously you could see, we're very excited to kind of see how that's gonna ripple out into, you know, future collaborations with these communities, so. So just quickly, some of our goals for the next year. We just want to continue to grow our accessible programming and events, and we're constantly hearing from the community what they're looking for. So relying on them to kind of help host things as well as us as well. One thing we want to start in September is offering some free meeting and art space to local nonprofits, so that's something that we're gonna be reaching out to nonprofits to be able to use our space if we'd like to host gatherings there. As well as working towards a sustainability model is number one for the board in particular. And then, like I said, we're contributing to, you know, the Economic Action Plan and being really intentional about that and taking a leadership role within the Public Art Committee in particular, the Downtown Planning. And, yeah, we're, a conversation that kind of came up, so I snuck this one in here, was that came up over the weekend, was working towards attracting more artists to come to Bridgewater and supporting their individual success, so building that resiliency back to our values again. So just wanna point out, and I'm not sure what the rest of your evening looks like, I noticed it on your agenda, but we have a grant application in again this year and, you know, wanted to kind of, you know, so you could see our lovely faces and hear a little bit from us, but there is quite a detailed application form that we put in that goes over way more detail of what we just spoke about. So I'm not sure if we used our ten minutes, but if we could, we'd love to kind of show you a video. Do we have ten? Okay. It's a minute and sixteen seconds, so we can get it ready. So our summer student is lovely this year and he is a NASCAR student, taking film, so he's creating a series of videos for us this summer, so this is one that he's created so far. My name is Maddie, I'm eighteen years old. I play guitar and I sing and a few others. I've been attending the Open Mic Art Happening Bridgewater for four years, since I was fourteen, and ever since then, just wanted to kind of go to the open mics. Just singing until some other people sing and play, tell a story. Open mic has affected my musical practice in like all beneficial ways. It's given me a place to just perform without judgment, because at open mics, there's all talent abilities, whether it's someone who's a professional musician or just starting out, like I was, and it really gave me the opportunity to just try out performing. Yeah, it's really like opened up opportunities for me. So, yeah, I just wanted to kind of show you that, because it's fun, obviously, but just to kind of highlight one of our most successful programs, especially when it comes to our values around intergenerational, so it's exciting to kind of see a four-year-old performing beside an eighty-four-year-old sometimes. It's quite diverse in that way and, yeah, that people can have an opportunity to take a risk in a very supportive place, as you heard from Maddie, so. So that's all we have for tonight. Thank you very much.
Any questions for members of council? No? Right?
Really? Not one question? It's so good. We did such a good job.
You did such a great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks.
I see that our next delegation is here. There's no missing, missing these football guys as they come in into council chambers. Mr. Thinlenthorn and Mr. Peters, of course, well-known around the council table as they came years ago to pitch football down here in the South Shore, and we've had a number of successful years with Seahawks and now embarking on high school football for the very first time. But I know you're here for the, for to talk about the field. Do you want to come down and make your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am actually very disappointed that we found out about the fee charge for the fields in a letter. I would have hoped that council would have met with the stakeholders to discuss this in an open forum before any decision was made. Also, with the departure of Sandy as rec manager, we were never informed who to talk to, who's taken our position, if it has in fact been filled. I'd like to take a little bit of time to start with the history of the Seahawks. We started in 2012. We gave a grant, we received a grant from the province to the town for the price of the goalposts. It costs you fifty percent of the cost, which was $4,466, so half of that is what you paid. We installed them with a contractor locally, got Bridgewater Cement to donate cement for the base, Bucks Home Building Center dropped them in, dropped the goosnecks in. We started at 9:30 in the morning and it was complete by 11:30. We used four town crewmen to put the uprights in and screw them down. 2012, we were put on TSN as part of the 100th Anniversary Great Cup Tour, which in turn the next year generated the Craft Celebration Tour, of which, again, we brought TSN into town and put on a pretty good show. And we gave the town $30,000 to fix the field. We purchased a shed to store our equipment in that cost us $3,000. And just last fall, with the help of the engineering department, we got $1,200, or $2,500 from the town. We paid back $2,300 to the town for a clock, a scoreboard, that's valued at $12,000. So in tune, we've given the town $47,000 to make the field playable. We didn't ask for sponsorship like Delumberjacks did last year for $20,000. We didn't ask for $400,000 for Skateboard Park, and I don't know how you're gonna charge them for using that. And there's also money the town gives out for the LCLC and the Field House. Mr. Peters is gonna talk about Seahawk community involvement. We're a key one.
We've been involved in the community since we started. We, Kinsman has been a strong supporter of us and we've gone with them to, to help pack their gift boxes at Christmas time, sort apples, do that kind of thing for the Kinsman. We have been involved in the multi-sport activity where we've introduced football to a number of kids. We've had, we've had the Bridgewater Parks and Rec Day Camp down to Kinsman Field where we have actually involved kids in football there to introduce them to that sport. And we also have been on collecting food bank supplies with Birlator at the Christmas Parade. We've been involved at Big Axe Parade. We've been involved at the Bridgewater Elementary School Fun Day, at the Echol, the Rib Sud Carnival that they have every year. We've been involved in the community. We give back to this community. And all of these things, I mean, it's, that is what we do, but we also provide an opportunity for kids to be involved in a sport. And some of them, it's the only sport they're involved in. And it is by far one of the least expensive sports you will find. For $300, you get everything but your cleats. And that's it. We provide everything else for these kids to play. Unlike a lot of other sports where they have to pay their registration and go and buy a bunch of gear as well. So, and we're capping it at 300 because that's where pro kids and the other, the other funding kind of top out. So we want to make this usable and accessible for these, for these kids.
So I guess what we're here for tonight is to find out what we get for our $5 an hour. Are we gonna be charged by our booking? Because we book at five nights a week, two hours a night. I did look at the numbers, including games. If we run our program the way full bore, starting in May, we'll end up owing the town My question then becomes one of who's gonna police this? Because we were told by your Park and Recs crew to stay off the field till July, because they wanted it to have a chance to grow. I drive by the, and the schools out there playing cricket in May, right in the middle of the field, right where the bad spot was. So who's gonna police that? Who cleans up the excrement from the dogs that are walked and let loose in the park? We do. We found broken croquet mallets there last night, stuck in the ground. We have a friendly golfer who goes down there and takes his wedge and lines it up on the goal line and sees if he can hit it 100 yards and doesn't replace his divots, because I've picked up many tightless when we're lining the field. Field closures. If I'm told that I can't use the field, but I got it booked, am I gonna be charged? Who's gonna look after that? Do I have to keep the records for the town? Who's gonna line the field? In the past, the town has done it once, and the Seahawks have done it for eight weeks afterwards. You lend us the paint and the machine and we do the lines, two of us, two hours. We got a quote today from Gary that he's gonna do it once, and it's gonna be, what was the number?
He said it would take somewheres around sixteen hours, man-hours, and $10 a can and thirty-seven cans of paint.
We use 14 cans of paint to do the same field with two people, two hours. But if we're gonna pay for the field, then I'd like to say you can do the lines for us too. I don't mind being, sitting at home on the deck at 11 o'clock in the morning. Will the field booking be computerized? Or do I have to come into town, sit down with Ruth, and say, here's what I need, and here's the dates I need him for? But if it's computerized, if it's a rain out or I cancel, then I can click on it and the field will be free, hoping for somebody else to use. As John said, our fee structure is, in 2012, it was $250 for a kid to play football. Today, with increase in insurance costs and equipment costs and everything else, we're up to $300 for a child to play, but we give them $600 worth of equipment. We have 100 kids. That's $60,000 worth of gear. We're loaning and getting back, trying to keep it under $300, so that people with pro kids and jumpstart can apply and still play. How have we done? Well, we've been in a couple provincial Tier One Championships, haven't won one yet. We've been in a bunch of Tier Two Championships, haven't won one yet. But we are proud to say that we've sent two kids from our Six Aside Program to Holland College, so they're getting an education, a diploma, and another one's at Delhousie. And one of our first kids to start, Logan Taylor, is ranked number five in Canada as a player, not including his kicking ability. And when he was up in Calgary last month for the Canada Cup, he was approached by the coach from the University of Texas, San Antonio, and said, if he keeps going the way he's going, he's sending his parents' tickets to fly down there and see where he'd be playing football in the Alamo Dome. So, yeah, we've done a little bit. So I'm asking here, council, for exemption of the $5 an hour fee. I don't know how $1,400, $1,500 is gonna help the town, but if we're in that dire straits, I guess, give me some lights and I'll be glad to pay. Our five-year plan was to have four teams and a high school team and a scoreboard in five years. It took us six, but we had some hiccups along the way. So I leave it in your hands. Thank you.
Will you take any questions from council?
If you want to ask.
Does any council have questions?
Just for comparison's sake, so you've got now a Parkview Education Center high school team. What do they charge for their field usage? Is it free to the team?
Parkview?
Yeah.
They can't use that field.
Oh, that was on the Kinsman Field, right. Right.
So Parkview will be playing on Kinsman Field.
Okay, so do you have any comparisons, other communities that have football teams and what, what they're charged? Because I think we've done some comparison studies.
It depends on what you're giving as to what they charge. In Halifax, for example, if you go to Burnside, it's an artificial turf field with lights, with a scoreboard. They supply all the pads for the goalposts, they supply all the down boxes, the timing boxes, everything. You pay $130 an hour by the time.
You pay a hundred and thirty dollars an hour by the time taxes are added in. If you get on a grass field, sometimes they charge for games only. So we have four home games plus some exhibition games, and possibly, if you're in the playoffs, one home playoff game, semifinal, because the finals are held on artificial turf in the city. So, but if you're charging us for practice time, game time, and anything else that we're doing on that field, then I'm disappointed, that's all. I'm just saying, we've given back to this town forty-seven thousand dollars' worth of assets. And yes, some of them were used to fix the field, but the field needed fixing because it was twenty-five years of abuse. And hopefully, they've cleaned the catch patients this year. Any other questions?
So just going through some of your, some of your comments, some of those can be addressed by staff. How bookings are handled, we're not computerized yet at the town, but in terms of how it works, if there's a cancellation, and how that's charged, not charged, that's, I mean, we do that with other organizations. It's not something that's overly cumbersome, and staff can, can work with the Seahawks to make sure that's done as efficiently as possible. So just going through some of the things, I'm sure staff can contact you and check some of those off. We always have issues with people using the field when they haven't booked the field, or, I mean, trails, fields. We're going to be talking about the cemetery, about dogs using the cemetery, and people not cleaning up after it. I mean, it's an ongoing issue, and I would suggest if you do find damage or things like that, that, you know, you can contact staff, and they can come and clean it up.
What are we getting for our five dollars an hour?
Obviously, five dollars an hour is not cost recovery.
Obviously not.
So facilities, we can only, we can only go down the road of not charging for things for so long before they start impacting the tax rate. And we live in a town that has a high tax rate, that our community has said very clearly, do not increase the tax rate. And so we've had to make some difficult choices, had to make cuts in some departments. User fees are some of those. Obviously, if you, if you book ice time at the LCLC, it's a hundred and sixty-eight dollars an hour.
It's also a twenty million dollar building. Our field has been there for a long time.
Yeah, and it's never had football played on it until Seahawks came, so it's, it does have an increase of, you know, wear and tear, which is great. We want to see wear and tear, so it's not a, you know, we don't, we want you to use it. But we're trying to find that balance of, of getting some money invested back into those fields. And obviously, five dollars an hour isn't a lot, but it's better than no dollars an hour.
Has any other sports organization given you money?
So every other organization that uses the fields will have to be paying for the fields.
No, no, that's not what I asked. We have given you in money and in assets, forty-seven thousand dollars in five years. Has anybody else done that? Soccer, baseball, hockey?
Bulldogs?
Yeah.
Scoreboard.
Yeah, the scoreboard for the baseball, there's the dugout up there, the, the building that's up there. So there has been, has been some. Like, I don't want to discount what the Seahawks have done. I mean, our, as you know, our family's been involved in that organization, it's been great, and, you know, I don't want to diminish what you've given back. But at the same time, that's why it's five dollars and not fifty-five dollars. So staff can address some of the concerns, and we're just trying to find that balance of, of making sure we have the money to keep the field maintained without making it cost prohibitive for people to use the field.
Well, then, if I may, what, what kind of maintenance, and it may not be a question you can answer right now, Mr. Mear, but something that, that the staff could let us know is, for the five dollars an hour, what maintenance are they going to do for our five dollars an hour? So are they going to cut the grass, you know, every couple of weeks, make sure it's short enough to play on? Are they going to line the field every week for us? So if we're going to start paying for the field usage, then I guess we're looking at expecting a little something back, and not so much of our volunteer time put into, to doing stuff on the field. It's, I guess that's kind of what we're looking at when Gary said, what do we get for our five dollars? And, you know, I, I agree, five dollars isn't a full cost recovery. There's no way you could do that, I understand that. And recreational facilities are understandably money users, they're not money generators. And, and so, I don't know if, if you're going to generate enough money out of five dollars an hour to offset the cost of properly maintaining that field for us to use it right through until November.
And you stop cutting the grass in the middle of October, and we still go to the middle of November, so it's kind of hard running around in that.
The grass, the grass still grows.
So if there's issues like that, then I would suggest those should be brought to staff.
We're happy to follow up on those things. Generally, and we need to follow up, because there's a number of questions. Generally, the intended service level was, as per the existing service level, we spend over fifty thousand dollars a year on the fields, and the contemplated user fees is going to return to, I suppose, fifteen thousand dollars. So it's, it's, you know, we weren't looking at increasing our town service levels of the fields.
Okay, so I still have to line the field?
So, yeah, so we'd be happy, we'll have to have a follow-up discussion with you to clarify what it is, for sure.
Well, would that be an opportunity, then, for the town to contact the major stakeholders of that field, to actually come in and sit down and go over all of this stuff? Because that's something that could have happened, I maybe avoided having to come here in front of council. So if that's something we could do, then we weren't happy to come in and sit down and, and go over all of this.
And who do we talk to?
We'll, we'll reach out, I'll get your contacts through Sandra and get something up.
No, no, I'm talking about, like, if I have an issue with Gary, for example, and say, no, I'm not going to do this, who do I go talk to?
Ultimately, me. My name is Oliver Leder, and I may refer to on this, and I'm happy to make those arrangements.
But is there a person who's looking after recreation as a manager now, or not?
In terms of what service?
Any of the, any of the, like, if, if we had, if we had a booking issue down at the field, then, you know, we could have called up Carol at the time, or Sandy, and said, you know, we got a booking issue, there's, you know, we got practice, and there's someone down there on the field. So, you know, we, we could have sorted it out with, with her. Quite often, we go through Ruth, who is very good, and has always been very good in that department. But, you know, when Carol retired and Sandy gone, who replaces?
Is there somebody in that job?
So Ruth still does the bookings currently, has in the past, and still does. And, you know, Gary is obviously deals with the fields, but, like I said, I'm happy to have the discussion, follow up, and answer all of those questions with, with the organization. Make sure you have contacts, and you'll settle on, on bookings and service.
Sandra's got my contact information, so if she can send all the stuff through me, that's fine.
Thank you for your time. We didn't want to make this into a bitching session. When it comes to money, and we're on a very tight budget ourselves, and all those helmets have to be replaced in three years' time, and they're three hundred and fifty dollars a piece, so, yeah. We're trying to save money, too. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other scheduled delegation, so are there any members of the public that wish to speak as a unannounced delegation? Yes, no, maybe? No? Did you want to speak?
Yeah.
Yep, sure, if you wanted to come and state your name and...
My name? Lorance Seacote Woodmore.
Perfect, thank you. And just as an unscheduled delegation, you have two minutes. Not including questions.
I know you, you councils are well respected around this town, and the mayor. Great praise for you, I was going around door to door, with dogs crapping in cemetery, leaving big piles of stuff like that. August the third, I went into my aunt's tomb, that you've gone three years, and that's what I had to look at. It's not right. And all these people here, seventy percent of these owners here are dog owners, and they want dogs banned from the cemetery. They go to the dog park at Dayspring, spend a lot of money down there fixing, I mean, Central Trail or whatever, the hospital. And they go, whatever, they're dogs. They want the cemetery brought back. They don't want dogs in there. They want to have respect for it, and let the people just in there rest in peace. And when you win there to visit, you're not walking dog crap. Just before I came in here, I was in there visiting my aunt, I met a couple in there walking, and they were from out of town, and they signed a petition. They said, we have a dog, but we don't bring it to the cemetery. We leave home and we take it walk elsewhere. So, but just asking you folks to have a little respect, and see if you can ban these dogs from cemetery, give cemetery back to the cemetery like it should be. But you don't have to go in there dealing with crap and dogs leaking on stones. I got a hundred and some signatures in there, but I just get them one day, just between Victoria Road and Dominion Church on that, these people's dog owners. Would you folks like these?
Yes, please. Actually, if you can just pass them to Councilor Thorburn, we'll make sure that those get, those will come up to Sandra at the...
We just want to give peacefully in there, we're not going in there dealing with this stuff, brothers. You got a dog park, cemetery's not a dog park. That's what they're using it for. Anybody respects not using it for that. It's just these strangers coming in, they're not going in there to visit anybody, they're just going in there to let the dogs crap and leave. And we really appreciate you, councils, for having me on to it, see if you can ban these dogs from our cemetery. I can get you, I can get you thousands of signatures if you want, I'll go at the door. I did this all one day, sadly. A lot of, a lot of respected people on there, that's quite high, signed their papers, get the cemetery, should be the cemetery. So, and I don't want to be bugging you guys, I know, I know I call the mayor a lot, but he's going to fire me.
Now, I know you and I have spoken a number of times, and for most of this, it's, it is one or two individuals.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
And it's still the same one or two, for the most part?
That's doing this?
Yes.
Now, another one, lives on two eleven Pleasant Street, I don't know his name, but he had that dog there, saw the hateful guys, first name is George, I don't know. I found that much out. They're down there getting papers signed, all of them down there signing, except for me telling them to get the hell out.
This is on our agenda tonight, to deal with this issue.
Yeah.
Later on in the agenda, to discuss this, so I just...
Okay, I appreciate that.
Do any members of council have any questions?
No.
I mean, I'm in a bit of a loss. I, I mean, I can't think of very many things that are more disrespectful than allowing your dog to use somebody's loved one's grave site as their washroom. Like, if you just think of, there are parents in this community whose children are there. You've got veterans that are there, you've got people's parents, and brothers, and sisters, aunts, and uncles. And I just can't think of anything as low as allowing your dog to use those sites for that. I don't know, and I don't know how you can tell somebody who has no issue doing that to stop. Like, to me, it would be just a common sense, this doesn't seem right, I shouldn't be doing that. I don't, I don't know. But it's on the agenda for, for later, and we'll discuss it.
I do know, I see it all the time when I walk sand. I've got a three-bag policy. I always had three bags in my pocket, but some of them would just drag their dogs along the street, get us rid on the sidewalk, and, and we pick some up, and, you know, it's lack of respect for other people's property, and, and this should have to stop. There's no need to.
So what, over there, Conroy Churchill in Dominion, she signed a petition for me, and she told me, the Falcon Natty, his dog left a crap in her lawn, she called town police and called the fine, and two hundred and fifteen dollars.
Well, you do have to clean up after your pets, there's no, there's no debating that.
See, the other, the other thing is that the dog's peeing on the flowers in the cemetery, on the stones and stuff, and you go in there changing, you're messing in that stuff, that's not right.
It is on the agenda for tonight, and we will, we will be discussing that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
If you want to stick around.
You're fine, once you're canceled.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening. I'll leave a little grave on that one tonight.
All right.
No need, no need.
You have in your package the July thirteenth regular council meeting minutes, as well as the August seventh special council meeting minutes. Thank you to Ms. Porter-Low for quick turnaround on those, August seventh, but that's, that's pretty, kind of set in a precedent now. No pressure. Any questions, comments, discussion on that? Motion to approve the minutes? Counsel McGinnis, Justice Mayor Tanner, all is in favor, those opposed? Motion is carried. I thought you were going to put up your hand, you looked like you were going to... No! You voted, you wanted, we're not going to count it. Down to item six, planning item, rezoning from single-unit residential R1 to two-unit residential R2. And Ms. Childs is going to give us a presentation on that? You don't have to sit back up at the gallery, you can sit, you can sit next to Grant.
I don't have a right to be, but...
No!
Okay, so, yeah, this presentation is for the application to rezone seventy-five Pinehurst Avenue from single-unit residential to two-unit residential, which would require an amendment to the zoning map in the land use bylaw. So, the star is very small, but this is the location of the property, and it is just off Aberdeen, with the hospital just located at the bottom of that image. The requested rezoning is to enable a two-unit dwelling here, and there are no additions to the structure planned, and all interior renovations would be required to ensure building code compliance. The surrounding zoning is a single-unit and two-unit residential with one special commercial property located off Aberdeen Road. And the surrounding land use is predominantly a single-unit dwellings with three semi-detached dwellings on Pinehurst Avenue. And the future land use designation of the subject property and the surrounding area is low-density residential, sorry, low-density residential, as identified in the future land use map of our MPS. And this designation is reserved for uses permitted in the single-unit and two-unit residential zones, which the proposed zoning falls under. And the proposed conversion is not permitted under the current single-unit residential right now, unless the dwelling was built prior to August twenty-seventh, nineteen seventy-five, but this building was built in nineteen seventy-eight, so the zoning must change to enable the development. And as shown in the map, the homes in the area were built around this time, but there's a variety of different years, with some built before nineteen seventy-five and some afterwards. Staff has analyzed the policy relevant to this application, and in the MPS, there are policies on residential development for low-density residential designation. So land use conflicts are minimized, as the proposed use is considered to be low unit, or low-density residential, similar to the existing properties in the area. The proposed change also provides alternative to single-unit dwellings to support a full range of housing options in Bridgewater, and it promotes residential densification in strategic areas where there's already residential uses. The MPS also has policies for any amendments to the land use bylaw. Policy IM two is met, as the two-unit residential zone falls within the low-density residential designation of the future land use, which is located in the MPS. Policy IM three is met, as the proposed use is permitted within the R2 zone, the requested zone. Policy IM four is met, as there are no planned expansions to the existing structures, so the zoning standards for the requested zone are met. And policy IM six is met, with regards given to strategic growth, housing choice, compatibility, adequate services, transportation and traffic, and environmental suitability. So a public participation meeting was held on Wednesday, July twenty-fifth, here in council chambers, at seven PM, where six members of the public were present, as well as... chambers at 7:00 PM, where six members of the public were present, as well as the applicants. And some concerns were raised regarding the addition of windows and doors at the rear of the building that would affect neighboring privacy, as well as the expansion of the building footprint. But staff clarified that no exterior changes are, are planned for this building. Written correspondence was also received both before and after the public participation meeting. And so, the proposed land use bylaw amendment is to rezone 75 Pinehurst Avenue from single unit residential to two unit residential on the zoning map of the land use bylaw, similar, or just as the image shows. And so, staff recommend that council give first consideration to the proposed map amendment. There was a typo in the report, it should have said first consideration, not first reading. And that council schedule a public hearing for the proposed map amendment for September 10th, 2018, during the regular council meeting, beginning at 6:00 PM here in council chambers.
Great. Questions from members of council? Council Thorburn, then Council McGinnis?
So, really, what, the way that I read it, what they're asking for, what they're planning to do is turn their basement into a second unit within the same enclosure. There's no building on to the property. They're using existing property, getting it rezoned so they can actually have an apartment in the basement. Is that, that's correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Council McGinnis?
Is this a non-owner occupied property?
This is a non-owner occupied property.
Yeah, I misunderstood the first time I saw it. So, I thought the owner was just putting in an apartment. That's different for me.
Any questions from?
Strictly rental property.
I guess at this point, but it doesn't always have to be. So, there's some other two unit, two unit buildings in the area, and so rental, it could be rental or owner with those kind of properties.
So, the zoning doesn't dictate one or the other?
It doesn't, yeah.
Other questions from members of council? And then someone appeared, a big motion, Council Thorburn, you had a question?
Yeah, just to refer to Bill. So, the owner of the property is adding a second unit. They have no intention of selling that. They're putting in a second unit.
I'm not sure about.
At some point.
I'm not, yeah, I was going to say, I'm not sure about their plans for the tenancy of it.
But right now, they're looking for putting an apartment in, there's a second.
Yeah, so they want to, well, they just, I just know that they want two dwellings in the same building.
Two dwellings and then one closure, okay.
So, I misunderstood. Is it a non-owner occupied, is the owner of that property living in one unit?
Right now, I don't believe they are, but that could change. That's not something that we look at for the policy, for the planning policy, the ownership versus renting. So, it's not something that we would.
It's not a condition of.
Right, right, yeah.
Further question?
Oh, it's going to be.
Yeah, could you?
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater give first consideration to the proposed map amendment to the zoning map of the land use bylaw as contained in appendix D of document 18-113A and further. Schedule a public hearing for September 10th, 2018, during the regular meeting of council, beginning at 6:00 PM in council chambers of Town Hall.
I have a secondary, Council Frasier, any further discussion?
I will not be supporting the motion, the reason I just stated.
For me, I will be supporting the motion. It's minimal impact to the neighbors. There's no changes to the property, the outside structure. It's just to allow someone to live in a basement apartment, a legal basement apartment. So, our building inspector here will, of course, be making sure it's up to code and all that. And one of the reasons for me is that we know that we don't have a great supply of apartments that are of quality and affordable. And so, as one of the points in the presentation was a bit of a diversification of the housing stock there, I think it's important to at least go through the process and allow it to go through the process. And if the public are vocal about their concerns, then council will have to consider that. But for me, I'll be supporting the motion at this time. Any further discussion, Council Thorburn?
I grew up on that street, and I'm very familiar with the area. It was always a very diverse bunch of people that lived on the street, and the four duplex, or sorry, it would be, we have four duplexes on the corners, were typically rentals. They have sold in, in recent years. But some of them were the best neighbors we ever had, so certainly that, that mix really plays to building a strong neighborhood and diversifying the people that are, are living in the neighborhood. So, I think it's a great project. A wonderful family lived there, and they'd be very happy to see this kind of development and, and growth in the area.
Further discussion?
Question?
Questions being called. All those in favor, those opposed? Motion is carried. Our next item is correspondence for information. We have, at the, I believe, our last meeting received a couple of letters from people about the Desbrusay Museum, and we've received another one here from Mary Cunningham. I do just want to take the opportunity to just note that staff have presented the Museum 2.0 concept to the Chair of the Museum Commission, the Museum Commission itself, and the Friends of Desbrusay. I believe it was well received. It shows council's intention to work towards ensuring that the museum, which is an important part of our community, is sustainable. You know, just when I read the letter, there's a couple of things that jump out at me. The opening paragraph, I would, I would say that our, our debt is not spiraling out of control, which is, I want to correct that in the letter. And again, it asks that we state our intentions. I believe we have done that with the Museum 2.0 concept. It's a work in progress, but it'll be a work that we do together. And, you know, we do, while we did make financial cuts to the museum, we do still give a significant contribution to the museum. In fact, it's double the amount of any other community outside of HRM. And I think that shows that it is important to us to keep the museum going and to make sure that it is around. And we've, we've got a great staff person in there now who will continue the hard work that Barb and her team put in place. And later on the agenda, we've got some new members for the Museum Commission, which is exciting. And so, yeah, so we'll receive this letter and, you know, reaffirm our commitment to the museum at this time. Any questions about that? Council Thorburn?
Heritage Advisory Committee was, is part of that process too, and we all worked in partners with it. And I think from the get-go, there was probably a lack of an engagement. But once engagement took place, it wasn't long coming to a conclusion that we're all happy with and we all support it. And we're all behind it and willing to move forward together. So, it's a great day for the museum.
Thank you for that. There's no correspondence for action. We do have down reports and recommendations. We have sponsorship requests from the South Shore Lumberjacks. Documentation is in your package, as you know, we sponsored them last year. I don't know if, if anyone wants to, if we have to tee this up, or if it's just straight to the discussion and debate. I believe the request is the same as last year's, $15,000 was the request last year. I know Mr. Lindthorne said 20, but I believe it was 15 last year. This is the same request this year.
Just for clarification, last year, we did it as a sponsorship, not, not as a grant from grants to organizations, is that right? And that's the same thing that we're kind of looking, well, we're discussing?
It's a, it's a bit different. I think perhaps the CIO will maybe correct us on, it's not really a sponsorship as much as we're.
Sure.
You can, you can probably.
Through the mayor to council, there were some questions, and to clarify, the organization asking for, asking for the commitment from the town of Bridgewater is not a not-for-profit. So, as such, you know, municipalities are not able to provide grants to for-profit businesses. The purchase would be for the advertising outcomes that they are selling in their advertising package. The term sponsorship and advertising can be used interchangeably, so the purchase of advertising is in order. During the budget process, council set aside $10,000 expecting a request.
Would you like a motion? If you want to put the motion on the floor, we can then discuss it and debate it.
Yeah.
I move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to negotiate a $5,000 advertising package purchase with 3260405 Nova Scotia Limited for the 2018, 2019 South Shore Lumberjacks hockey season.
I have a second, second by Council McGinnis. Discussion?
Is that plus the $10,000 that's already in there?
No, no, this is.
Instead of 15, we're offering 5.
Correct.
I mean, I'll be supporting this. I think the lumberjacks do, do play an integral part of our community. They're heavily involved in the community as players. They bring a tremendous amount of economic spinoff to the community. They are also a big customer at the LCLC, which has a deficit that needs to be paid as well, so that's, that's a good thing. And I think it's always good to put our brand, Town of Bridgewater brand, out there for, for visiting people in the community that are coming from away and seeing how great the town of Bridgewater is. So, I can support this.
Council McGinnis?
The original request for 2017, '18 was for $15,000 for three years. And we gave the $15,000 last year for one year. For many reasons, we've made some cutbacks to, to different organizations for 17, 18, or 18, '19 budget year. And so, I can live with 5,000. I, I personally like to see more. The owner of the team loses money every year on this. I just question how much. That last year was a very successful year. Their average attendance increased per game by 150. I think I saw in that economic impact statement that was given to us that, you know, the, the team's worth of one million dollars for the town a year. And so, and I agree with Deputy Mayor's comments about, you know, as a anchor tenant for the LCLC. So, I'll be supporting the motion, obviously.
Anyone else? Council Thorburn?
I definitely support the motion. I was very pleased with how we were represented by the lumberjacks last year, and the kind of relationship that built from that. And certainly, one thing that, that I think needs to be part of our focus going forwards is what kind of evening life do we have in Lunenburg County? And they contribute strongly to, to having some sort of entertainment after office hours and, and outside of weekends alone. And I think that's very important for people to have somewhere to go. I hope, you know, and there are, there are more spinoffs as, as they, well, they've been around for a long time, but as, as they grow and become more strongly supported in the community, that it will create some more spinoffs, you know, with, with using the bus to show people how other businesses can profit from it as well. So, I certainly support it and hope that they have a fantastic season.
Council Frasier?
Yes, I just wanted to make note, I agree with everybody's comments, and will be supporting the motion. Just through, through the notes in the package, I just want to commend the lumberjacks for giving back to the community in various ways and various events for our youth. They do partake in events at the school, through the community, so it's good to see that they, they do support the community in various events through our town.
Council Thorburn?
I won't be supporting the motion, because I don't think $5,000 is enough. I would support 10. I would support 15, but not 5. The value that they add to our community, the work that they do here, is worth a lot more to me than the $5,000. They're heavily invested in this town. They spend a lot in this town. And they bring a lot of money into this town. And I just don't think $5,000 is enough. And, and like I say, $10,000, I would support, it's two thirds what we gave them last year, but certainly not 5.
Thank you. I'll be supporting the motion. I, I mean, I don't want to repeat what everyone said. They're, they're great ambassadors for the community, and they bring a lot to the community. I'll just expand on Council McGinnis's statement about the economic impact, and I'll add that it's beyond the town, it is regionally. And so, with that, it is my sincere hope that our neighboring municipality will also entertain the ask that I believe is before them as well. I know that for whatever reason, and then that's their decision, they didn't last year. I think that the success of the new management structure last year, the way they've gone out to solidify their relationship with businesses, and as Council Graves, if he was here tonight, the first thing he would say is, where's the support from local business? I think they've done that. They've done their work. You can see that when you walk in that facility, and there's probably twice as much, twice as many logos from businesses that have stepped up and sponsored. So, they've, they've done that part. In my opinion, that increase should lower our ask as well. So, I'm, I'm comfortable with the, with the number that, that's been put forward in the motion. But again, I really hope that that ask is met by our neighboring municipality favorably, because it is a regional impact. There's hotels outside this town that are full. There are restaurants outside this town that benefit as well. And so, that, that burden has to be shared. We cannot continue to pay for us and pay for someone else, so I hope they step up. Any further discussion?
Question?
Questions being called. All those in favor, those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is recommendations of the Grants to Organizations Committee for the second intake for this year. And perhaps someone from that committee will make the motion, and then we can discuss it. Council Frasier? Yes, please.
Yes, Your Worship, that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendation of the Grants to Organizations Committee and award grants for the August 1st, 2018 intake period as follows. YMCA of Southwest Nova Scotia, 3,000. Lunenburg County 4-H Club, 1,500. And Art Happening, 5,200.
Thank you. Can I have a second, or please? Council McGinnis? Discussion?
Yes, I will speak briefly on it. As you may or may not know, each one of those organizations are getting less than what they asked for. The budget for grants to organizations was essentially reduced quite substantially this year. That was actually discretionary for the committee to deal with. $29,000 to be exact. And I know each one of those organizations asked for more than what they're already receiving, especially Art Happening. As you know, we've, in the past, we've given $15,000 a year. This year, it's 5,200. And our budget is now gone. We have no more money left for grants to organizations. And so, that's the way it is, and it's just a sign of the times.
Further discussion?
So, just to confirm, this is the second intake?
Yes.
But it'll be the final intake.
That's the final, there's no more.
No more, right, okay.
For the grants to organizations.
Yippee doke. And as Council McGinnis said, this is a sign of the times. And this goes back to my previous statement, is that, you know, if you look at any town across this province, we are burdened with, I mean, it's going to sound like a broken record, but I'm going to say it over and over again until someone hears me. We are paying for our services. We are paying for things, our roads and someone else's roads. We're paying for our policing and someone else's policing. And if money went where money was needed, and money was taken from municipal units appropriately, and not taken from municipal units appropriately, we would perhaps be having a different discussion. We would perhaps be able to put $15,000 towards the lumberjacks, $15,000 towards Art Happening, and $5,000 towards the YMCA. I mean, I'm sure I could speak for all of us. We'd love nothing more than to be able to give to all the organizations that are worthy of the money, that come and ask for the money. Right? We heard, we had the presentation with Art Happening. We've seen what they've contributed, but the reality paints a dimmer picture. And it's not because we're not good financial stewards with our money. It's actually, you know, it's because we are. But at the same time, it's, we're burdened with paying for our share and someone else's share. And until that stops, and it's not this government's problem, it's not the previous government's problem, or the previous government before that, it's an ongoing problem that's decades old, that is catching up to every single town, I would say without exception, in the province of Nova Scotia. And if it doesn't change, then next year, when we go through this intake, we'll be lucky if we get to the second intake. And then the year after that, we may have to sit back and say, there is no grants to organizations, which would be a shame, because there are some very worthy organizations that need some money to just stay afloat. But it is what it is.
Just to build on what you said, it's not a level playing field. It's just not. And until the profits understands that, I'm not sure what we can do.
Any other discussion? Council Thorburn?
I, I know how much we gave the field hogs. But how much did they ask for? Was it 35 that time?
30.
And we gave them 25?
It was 30.
Well, 30.
The Field House?
Field House. What did they ask for?
Yes, they asked for more. I don't recall straight up. They asked for thirty-five and we gave them thirty?
We gave them twenty-five.
Twenty-five is what we gave them. Pretty near half of the fifty-four thousand dollars. That disturbs me a little bit. Because we're not using fairness with the rest of the groups if we give them a lion's share.
We do get use out of the, the Field House, though. Part of that is we get program use as well. Is that not correct? Correct. We're moving, yes. And that's basically, yes, whether that's showing up in grants or we're actually using that money for time. So we're buying something. It's not, here's twenty-five thousand dollars. We've framed that in terms of, we want twenty-five thousand dollars worth of time.
Well, maybe the money's in the wrong category. Maybe it should be somewhere where it makes more sense in the budget process and not in the grants. If it's not a grant, then it shouldn't be in with the grant.
Thank you.
Sure. Yes. Can we leave that with you to take back and kind of evaluate?
Councilor McGuinness?
If I may, just to talk a little bit about grants to organizations. So we can't, we can't discuss this in detail tonight. But we have some organizations that we have been giving to now for a number of years. It's become ongoing operations funding that they depend upon. And I'm not sure that's our role. To quote the former mayor, Walker, grants to organizations should be seed money, help to get an organization going, that type of thing. Once we become ongoing funding for an organization, perhaps that should be a line item in the budget as opposed to a grant to organization. That's something maybe we should discuss later on.
Yeah, I would agree.
I think we've discussed that my six years on council, but I don't think we've ever really addressed it. I know the band used to have a grant. We come every year. Then I put that in the fire department budget ten years ago. It's part of the fire department budget. Now, it makes it so much easier. It belongs in the budget, to have in the budget. You're not coming year after year. Then the grants are really doing what they were intended to do.
I know we've discussed that with senior wheels and other organizations that, you know, for ten or fifteen years we've been funding. So it's probably time to add that to it. It's also, that's a matter that council can discuss during the budget process.
Sure.
Part of the reason why the twenty-five thousand dollars is tagged to, to grants is because when we were looking for money last year, that's where we took it out of. So these are discussions that are always, these are always in order for council to have as we have our multiple budget discussions. And they are difficult discussions because there's a lot of great asks, great causes, and great community organizations out there. And it's, there's no perfect answer because the money tree, as Mayor Mitchell said, has been shaken fairly bare. It's like the little Charlie Brown Christmas tree is what it looks like.
Charlie Brown trees.
Any further? No, we haven't. Any questions? There's a question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program. June two thousand eighteen report there for your information. I don't know if anyone has any questions from that report or anyone needs more information. That's there in front of you. No? You guys are all concentrating. No questions? Everyone's good? Okay. The next item is a return to the dogs in the Town of Bridgewater Brookside Cemetery. Of course, we heard from delegation tonight that it's, it's still an ongoing issue. We know it is. It's not, it's not a, it's not a debatable fact. We do have an issue with, with dogs defecating in the cemetery. How council wants to address that is what we need to discuss tonight. So if it's just to, you know, status quo, then we'll just continue status quo. There is a motion, there's a motion in your package, but I'm, of course, open to what council wants to do if we want to try something other than what's presented there or something. Councilor Frazier?
I have a question. So for the process, if we end up amending the bylaw or suggesting to look at that, so can we make a motion tonight around the situation which would amend the bylaw? What is the correct steps?
So if we amend the bylaw, then the amended bylaw would come back to council to go through its readings. So it, I mean, it's not a, we don't have amended bylaw in front of it. Right, right. So this would just be to direct staff to amend the bylaw as, as however council wants it amended. Then we'll go through for future consideration. Then we'll go through from there to first reading and from there to second reading. So it will be a little bit of a lengthy process. So the public will be aware if we decide to make changes. Yes, in three months. Councilor McGuinness?
Thank you. But the current bylaw, a dog must be on leash if it's on town property and the cemetery is town property.
Correct.
So the new bylaw would be something like no dogs in cemetery.
Or, or I believe one of the options here-
No dog, but service dogs.
Yeah. And one of the options here was that the, the dogs have to stay off the grass at least. So the one that's presented in the package would be you could walk your dog on a leash through the cemetery, staying on the roads, but you could not go on the grass, which does solve that issue. But I police that. Councilor McDonald?
So if we're having difficulty there, there's a bylaw that requires dogs to be on leash and you are required to clean up after your pets. And if we are having trouble enforcing that now, does this, this new recommended motion give us any, anything different to, to work with for enforcement or?
I don't know how you enforce it, other than the easy one, which is no dogs in the cemetery. And then obviously, there's no gray area. It's just if there's a dog in there, the dog has to come out. But that's, that's quite the, quite the ask.
I agree with Councilor Jennifer. You know, requiring dogs to stay off most grass. You know, we've got bylaws now that we can't enforce. They're not enforceable. So adding something else that's not enforceable just compounds the issue. A, we probably don't have enough staff to do the enforcement. And, you know, adding more to it doesn't make the problem go away. It just creates another problem.
Councilor McDonald?
The cemetery is a lovely place to walk if you're being respectful. If we didn't allow dogs, and I, I recognize that there's lots of streets and sidewalks and park, dog park and safe places to walk your dog, is there negative impact or any, can somebody come back and say, you know, I have every right to walk in a town park with my dog? You know, can we say you can't have dogs in this specific location? We can? Okay.
But further to that, my concern would be, we do have beautiful off-leash dog park. There's no question. And we do have lovely parks to walk your dog on leash. But if you remove the cemetery as a location to walk your dog, that doesn't mean that everyone can automatically go to the next location down the road, right? There, we do have people with accessibility issues. You know, if you have to walk twenty minutes to get to the place to walk your dog, it's fine in that balance. I just keep going back to, I cannot believe that there are people in this community that would allow their dog to do that. Like as a dog owner myself, I'm just, I'm horrified.
I mean, right next door, you have a beautiful trail system, like literally next door to the park, the cemetery, sorry. So, yeah.
There's no, there's no, there's endless options for, for these people who are allowing this to happen, to, to-
Such as their yard?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Are we able to ask the bylaw enforcement officer to do a bit of a focused crackdown, so to speak, for a week or two?
We, I mean, we can.
Might, I mean, this-
We can certainly do education, surveillance and, and be present. That's no problem. You know, I think it's difficult to self-police. What you're seeing there is obviously somebody lets their dog do their thing.
But it sounds like this gentleman has certainly identified a few of the sort of culprits, so to speak, and should be relatively easy to focus in on.
I mean, my go-to was education, but I still go back to, if, if you don't know this is wrong, then, I mean, we can, you know, Patrick can do a video on it. We can put it in the bridge. But at the end of the day, if you haven't figured out that this is disgusting and illegal already, don't do a video on that, Pat, please.
But forcing someone to have to pay for their, that mistake may very well let them see the light a bit more, perhaps.
Yep. So perhaps, is that, is that council's, wish Councilor Thorburn?
Unfortunately, in, in most bylaws, honest people don't have an issue with. And there's two or three people that's gonna ruin it for the majority. And that's the ones you feel sorry for. But at some point in time, you have to, you do your due diligence. Enough is enough. And you have to make a stand to correct the situation. And I'll support trying to get enforcement for a couple of weeks. But I, if nothing changes, then I'll be looking at bringing a motion forward to prohibit all dogs, except service dogs, from the cemetery.
Can we, would you be willing to reach out to enforcement? And can you connect with the gentleman? Because I know he has enough information that it probably wouldn't be, wouldn't be that hard to pinpoint when and where.
And I'm assuming that we have all of our signs posted there and, and free doggy bags here, like we do with our parking, just there. So there's no excuse?
I don't know if we have doggy bags.
Well, there is by the garbage containers up on the Centennial Trail.
Yeah. But I don't know about in the cemetery. I don't know if we have signs either. There's a sign to, leash. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. We're just covering our bags up. Yeah, okay.
Wouldn't hurt to have a sign that reminds them of the fines, whatever it is, two hundred and fifty dollars. So is council okay? It's just, we're gonna go with status quo, but ask that there's some increased enforcement. And perhaps at our first meeting back in September, we can have some information from bylaw enforcement to see if it's, if they had any success or if it's kind of gone nowhere because they haven't- Or give us, give us a little bit more than a couple of weeks, you know? Yeah. So that gives you a month to our next meeting, even if it's just an update to say they've identified the individual and it's continuing or it's not gonna, I don't know.
Would it be difficult to have a police car drive through there once or twice in the evening? Because that's what's happening, early morning, right?
Well, again, I think the conversations I've had with the gentleman, he can tell you exactly what's happening.
Okay. Then you should be able to-
Yeah. So I think we have a pretty good starting point.
Yeah.
And we'll bring that back to council. Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We have our building inspection report for June and July. And the town is just trucking along. Continue to, to do well and grow. And any questions on that? I know we've, we've used this format for a while now. I'm continually impressed by the, the way the new formula or the format shows us the data that's there. I hope the public take, take a moment to look at that. And if they, if they want that information, they can certainly reach out to any of us and we can provide those stats. Any, any questions? While we have Mr. Hopkins here, I know he's, he's gonna be disappointed if he's not asked at least some hard questions. He could have been bailing hay at this very moment.
Is the Gauss property on that?
No, it's not. No. So that will make a big difference.
Ever make a big difference or bring it up substantial. So we had a question.
That was a good question. Okay. Next item is the recommendation of the Director of Finance for the two thousand seventeen eighteen surplus from the LCLC. So-
I'd love to make a motion.
Would you?
Sure.
I move the Town Council of Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and approve a transfer to a new reserve for the Lunenburg County Life Todd Center in the two thousand seventeen eighteen fiscal year. An amount of twenty thousand dollars is outlined in document eighteen dash one two two.
Perfect. I have a second here. Twenty-seven, yes? Second by Councilor Thorburn.
Please to report our, it's our share of the surplus of fifty-four thousand dollars that the LCLC had this year. So it's come back to us and we're recording a reserve for future capital expenditure.
I wonder if it has anything to do with the new chair of the Finance Committee. Could that be?
I think that's what it is. It's really progressed since, since I've taken over.
Do you like that? I just set it up for him to hit it on the fuck. Any questions on that? Councilor Thorburn?
No, I'm just happy to finally have a facility that we have some reserve funding that we don't have to go to our reserves to do things. It's awesome.
Yes, it's awesome to report that we lost less money.
Yeah.
But we're getting there. I just want to make that clear that the public understands we didn't have a profit. We have a surplus based on budget. So, yes, it's nice to have some money in reserve. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. You're looking at me like, why? You always have to say one more thing. Next item is RFP two thousand eighteen dash zero four for the Town Hall Elevator Modernization. So I guess we're getting rid of the, whenever hamster pulls up the chaos?
Not that quite.
No, it feels like it sometimes when the door creaks.
I'm just gonna update it a little bit. It's quite old itself. But if we looked at doing it a few years back and it got bumped, but it's back again. So we're going to modernize the elevator and do some, hopefully do some upgrades to the cab itself. So do you want a whole ditty on it or?
I'll read a couple lines anyway.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
The staff issued an RFP two thousand eight dash zero four, or two thousand eighteen dash four, Town Hall Elevator Modernization on June nineteenth, which later closed on July eighteenth. The RFP was advertised on the town's website and the provincial procurement website for four weeks. The finance department ended up issuing eight packages and we then received four, three submissions back with the prices ranging between a hundred and seventeen thousand and a hundred and thirty-one thousand net HST. The budget for the capital project is a hundred and forty thousand dollars, including the cost of the elevator consultant. So we had hired Vertical Transportation Elevator Consulting to help with our tender process and, and put all the, the right information in the package so we could get a, a good tender bid. That cost was approximately seventy-three hundred dollars, leaving a hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars, ninety-eight cents left for the work to modernize the, the elevator. Staff and the consultant scored the submission and agreed Thysen Crump Group was the most suitable to perform the work. In the proposal, we also included two options. One option was, the first option was the cab refurbishment, which was approximately nine thousand dollars extra. And also, option two was the replacement of the exterior door skin and the wrapping around the door openings on levels one, two, and four, which costs approximately ninety-nine hundred dollars. Staff felt it was very important to include both the cab refurbishment and the stainless steel hoistway door and frame as they're visible to the public and are original equipment and are showing their age. Staff would recommend the council award RFP two thousand eighteen dash zero four to Thysen Crump Elevator Canada for the modernization of the Town Hall Elevator, including options one and two, for the installed price of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Questions? Councilor McDonald?
So fairly small elevator cab. Is it appropriate size for accessibility?
I think it's just a little bit too small.
Okay.
But to change that, it would be a-
Significant renovation?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll bring the motion.
Thank you.
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and award RFP two thousand eighteen dash zero four Town Elevator, Town Hall Elevator Modernization to Thysen Crump Elevator Canada Limited, including options one and two as proposed in the RFP submission dated July eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, for a total install price of a hundred and fifty-one thousand, three seventy-two twenty, including HST, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cent net HST.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please? Deputy Mayor Tanner, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Our second last item is the Smart Cities Challenge update. So these are part of our regular updates on our exciting Smart Cities Challenge. I'll turn it over to the CIO.
Sure. So through the Bay Area Council, as committed when we were recognized as finalized in this process, we promised to provide a monthly update to council. in this process, we promised to provide a monthly update to council that we could share with the public. We received the, the application guideline from Infrastructure Canada last week. We were really doing some initial preparatory work, you know, getting ready to get into our work plan for putting together this submission, but really needed to make sure that our approach was aligning up with the guide. So we've been going through this guide for the last several days to make sure that we understand all of the requirements and how it will be evaluated. So that will come to council, and staff will be doing a workshop with council here within the next month. So we have engaged some of the team, been recruiting some of the team that has come to council before in terms of funding. There's been a competition open for an energy finance and development coordinator job position that was extended. It was to close last week, and we've extended it a couple more weeks, working on our contract with Efficiency One for the onsite energy manager. We have contracted Dan Roscoe from Roswell to start providing some technical support to us as we approach. We did a public request for information, EOI, to see who's out there that might want to get some stuff across our, us as we were, we were starting that. We had some interesting responses on that that are, that are helpful. So things are progressing. It's very exciting to be a Smart Cities finalist. It's creating some conversations and bringing people to the Town of Bridgewater that are interested in smart cities that we may not have been otherwise introduced to. We've been seeing businesses coming to Bridgewater. And, you know, it's, 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 it's good stuff.
Any questions? All good. Awesome.
All agree.
Our last item is recommendation of the museum director for Museum Commission Citizen Appointments. And so I would actually ask a member of our museum commission to make the...
I'm happy to make this one. It's an honor. The Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater appoint Joanne Hadley to Bridgewater Museum Commission, effective immediately, for a three-year term, and confirm Peter Aikle's term ending March 31st, 2021.
Wonderful. Thank you. Can I have a secondary, please? Counselor Fager? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. There is no other business for this regular meeting. We have a meeting next door. And I just look for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.